Okay, so this is Tuesday, October 1st. It's the Board of Commissioners' work session. And our first item on our agenda is a Citizens Board interview with Teresa Hall for the Senior Services Council Citizen Board. And Teresa, come on up and have a seat. Come grab a seat by the mic with a...yeah, that's good. And I don't know if Charlotte's coming down or not. If not, doesn't necessarily matter, but thank you for applying, first of all.
You're welcome.
And we'd love to throw some really complicated and difficult questions at you to see how you handle them.
I have one really technical question. On your application, you wrote "as an emerging senior." Can you define that for me? I love that term. As an emerging senior.
Um...
We are all there, aren't we?
I know, I know. It's that feeling that you get when you go to the movie theater and they don't ask how old you are and they automatically give you the senior discount. That's what it is.
That defines your...
Or when you look around and you're the oldest person there.
You're like...
And you don't think that you're a senior, but I realize that we are. And my friends are starting to retire and...
Yeah, I like that term. An emerg...I'm gonna use that. I'm gonna...I'll give you credit for it. But I want to thank you. Thank you for coming up and for applying. It's a great board. They're busy. They do amazing things. And I'm assuming that you have time to participate?
I guess that's a question that I have for you. How often does the board meet? What...if they're meeting on Tuesdays, probably I don't.
Steve has the answer.
The meetings are the third Wednesday of each month, not...maybe nine months out of the year. It's not 12 months out of the year. From 1:00 to 3:00 o'clock. A lot of the members will eat lunch at noon before the meeting, so it gives them a chance to visit with different people.
At this senior center?
At the senior center by the hospital.
Uh-huh.
And occasionally, there are other events that the members participate in. A couple days at the farmer's markets, running a booth. Some people go to the Senior Lobby Day in Denver in March and different things like that, which more optional things, but it's opportunities to participate more.
So if we plan no babies on the third Wednesday of the month from 1:00 to 3:00, we're good, right?
Yeah, I actually work in Aspen on Wednesdays at Community Health and could make that work. Is the primary work that the Senior Advisory Board does around the senior...is it serving as an advisory group just for the senior center or count like for all issues related to seniors?
Well, it's the advisory to the senior services.
All senior services, though.
So Chad Fetterich is the head of that.
Right.
And then there's all the staff at the senior center. So it's part of the, you know, the Health and Human Services Department.
Right, but can you...can the board speak out on like, for example, an issue I was thinking about this week when reading in the paper, all of the lack of childcare for preschoolers. And then you look at our aging seniors and sometimes I think about having some sort of care, what do they call it? Respite care for those that are caring for the aged, those that are, you know, we've got a number of people in our community these days and may have more in the future. And I look around and think, well, where could that be? Same thing, no space. Would it be in the senior center? And then I thought, oh, it could be with the daycare centers. But, I mean, would that issue be appropriate to come to you all? It's not my...I mean, I'm just hypothetically asking you that.
Definitely. There's a lot of talk around finding a new space for a new senior center.
Yeah.
Which is separate from the hospital and has more square footage and is not tied in with the Whitcomb Terrace assisted living. So it'd be, you know, separate those identities.
Right.
Yeah, but they...but the seniors, they look at all kinds of issues with the aging well communities. They're looking at big state plans and working at the state and federal level on issues. So it's focused on advising the senior center staff, but it goes much further than just day-to-day operations.
Right, and I've looked at the objectives, the eight points, that draft and all that, so I do know all of that.
George had a question.
So thanks for playing. So some of your earlier questions, I think maybe helped answer my question, but why do you want to get involved with a senior center?
I just...
Advisory.
Well, I just kind of got fixated. I think it started back when Chris Marsh was thinking about starting a senior center in the Mid Valley and that fell through. Probably about that same time, my mother started developing issues. So I'd go to Wyoming and I'd think about, you know, I got involved in in-house daycare for my mom. And then I got involved in other elder care issues and then nursing home issues and then like, you know, I kind of live it. It's my alter life right now, is that I go up and I do that. And I've gotten so fixated, like I'll think, I'm gonna start a nursing home here. And I, like, in my own little head, I'm not part of any entity, but I'll, you know, I've looked at property, I've looked at stuff, I've looked at all these different ideas. And then I think, I'm nobody. Like, but maybe because I'm so interested in that population, I've worked my whole life on the other side, which isn't with newborns. But I realized that we've got this whole group of people in our community and a lot of them are my friends that are in their 80s now and they've got some issues that I'd just like to help address.
All right, great, thanks.
Good answer.
Yeah.
First of all, thank you for applying for the board. I'm served on the senior council as the county commissioner representative. I don't get...sometimes I can't go to the meetings because it conflicts with our meetings here. And I'm not a voting member, I'm there more ex officio. But first of all, I really appreciate what you've done with your mother over a year period. I, you know, we've been there and done that with Molly's mom also. And I totally understand the issues involved with being a caregiver and being a caregiver from a long distance away, too, is difficult. But from the sounds of it, if it works into your schedule to be there that one Wednesday a month, definitely you would fit in well with the Senior Services Council. The issues, we talk about different issues. We talk about mundane things and then the bigger dream kind of issues.
Right.
We also are working on the eight domains of our...Picken County Plan is being shortened and aligned with the AARP's eight domains. And then we'll have a whole set of action plans revolving around those eight domains. So those are...that's kind of the part of the marching orders, the different members on the board work on different issues on those action items.
No, that's good. No, I have them right there with me, so I am familiar with them.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah.
Kelly?
Hi, nice to meet you.
Likewise.
And thank you for applying.
Sure.
I didn't say much, so we're okay. Given your just recent very intimate experience with elder care, did you have any takeaways about any kind of public services or policies that you thought were missing or would have been helpful for you to support you in that effort for your mom?
Public policies here that are missing?
Well, they're just in your...I know you were in Wyoming, so, you know, I'm just curious of...
They have a really, I guess, the daycare, the adult daycare was the one part that I was trying to figure out. I think a nursing home as well. I know we have one, we have several in the lower valley. I don't know. And I've investigated them and looked at them and, I don't know, just different models and philosophies about taking care of the aged. I don't think Aspen probably wants to be, what do they call them, a senior-friendly community like some communities are. I think Carbondale's gotten that distinction recently. And you have to do certain things to have it. That might not be good for our reputation, but...
I thought we were already.
Well, we are. Picken County is...
Is Picken County is?
Age-friendly designation.
Okay.
We were like the, I can't remember now, the third in the whole state, I think.
Oh, well, then I'm sorry, I stand corrected. I just, I read it recently about Carbondale home that I was thinking. But for the county, yeah.
And they just got that designation, which is awesome.
Definitely.
Carbondale did it because Garfield County was hesitant and hasn't done it. So Carbondale stepped up to the plate.
Yeah.
It kind of opens up some possible grant funding opportunities to at the federal level, so.
Well, and I think a lot, I mean, we do have older individuals in Aspen, but somehow I had a voter registration list in Old Snowmass at one point. And that's why I was going through, or for something, I was a caucus chair. And I'm going down it, everybody was the same age. And I won't tell you what age they were, but just, I think everyone could afford to buy at the same time in their lives. And we're all the same age.
Right.
And a lot of people from Aspen that are aging have moved to the Mid Valley. So we've got this area there that could use some help.
Well, I appreciate that input because, you know, it helps me think about how does that concern about, you know, care during the day align with some goals for aging in place?
Right.
And what would programs that support each other in that way look like?
Right. You've got a married couple and the wife has dementia and the husband's stuck all the time. And it'd be great if he could take her to be with some other, you know, and it wouldn't be that hard. So I'm not asking to join the board because I want to make something happen, but those kinds of ideas go through my head.
You might be able to make something happen.
Well, yeah, but I mean, that's not it. But I, what I find is that I'm driving up and down the valley fantasizing about different pieces of property and I'm thinking, I can't do a thing about it. But maybe...
Maybe you can.
Maybe I can. I don't know.
Teresa, you, I think you'd be great on this board because, first of all, you probably know most of everyone on it already and have worked with a lot of people. You're part of the healthcare community already. I was thinking, while you're driving up and down and thinking about things, have you had much experience or observed any of the places where you have senior and childcare together, proximate, where there's some intermingling? And I keep hearing about these programs.
I know I do, too, but I have not, I haven't seen one.
Yeah.
But I, I mean, it seems like it's possible.
Go to Holland or someplace.
Right, right. And it seems like with our limited space that maybe that would be a good solution for something.
It's talked about at the state level and at the local level. And I, too, don't know, have an example to show where it's works, except perhaps in China where the old people take care of the little babies. They're like the built-in babysitters.
I did, you know, I did see it in, where was I? Cuba. I did go, you have to go on those social tours, and we did go to a nursing home childcare center.
Card care facility.
Right, right.
So, but I don't know that much about it. When would the, when would the next meeting be?
Well, it's, let's see if we can find that here. It's the third Thursday. I'm trying to think of Thanksgiving might mess it up for November.
Wednesday or Thursday?
Person you want to talk, call Patty Kravitz at the senior center and she could give you...
We should have it on for October. So the third Thursday?
Yeah, the third, the third...
Would be the 17th of October.
I thought you said, is it Wednesday or Thursday?
A Wednesday would be the 16th.
It's on Wednesdays, the six, so the 16th of October.
Okay.
Great. Any other, any questions for us? Any, what would your reservations be about coming on? Schedule's okay?
Yeah, time commit, I have to have an operation. That's why I was asking you that.
Okay.
At the end of October, so I wanted to make sure I could go.
We'll schedule your senior services time around.
Okay, thank you.
Also, you're, I mean...
Oh, and hopefully in the future, I'll have more time.
Teresa, you're also welcome to come at any time, whether you're on the board or not. It's a very...
Oh, to the senior...
It's a very convivial group. Everybody gets along and anybody could participate. There is another event that, in the meantime, that you might be interested in. It's an organization called A Little Help. And Mary Kenyon, who does consulting with the Picken County Senior Services, has organized this. So on Saturday, October 12th, there will be a workday for people in the Roaring Fork Valley to go help. Not, it's not necessarily senior citizens, it could be people with whoever has some physical disability. They can't do their yard work, for instance.
Right.
So it's gonna be, a lot of it just a fall workday in people's yards around the valley to...
Will that be publicly known? That'll be probably newspaper ads.
Yeah, it will be.
Okay, yeah, I need to write that down.
It's just, I just actually signed up today. There was a link to, link to sign up.
A Little Help?
A Little Help.
Great.
And so this will be the first workday in the Roaring Fork Valley with this organization.
That's neat.
And there'll be a lot of people from the senior council, I'm sure, will be participating in it.
That's great. Would you, will you all let me know or...
What we have to process, when our next regular meeting, we have vacancies on the board, so we can appoint someone now. And then we have to do it by resolution, so it would come back to us at our next regular meeting, so we could have you on the board by the 16th.
Okay.
And Charlotte from upstairs will let you know. She'll call you.
And because we have vacancies, you could come on as a regular member. There's still room for alternates as well.
People are knocking down the door to get on it?
Well, you know, it's nice...
Actually, it's one of the favorites.
It's one of the favorites, yeah.
Good.
It's one of the boards that there are actually term limits. You can only serve for two, four-year terms and then you're, you have to take a sabbatical from the board.
Then you can come back.
Then you can come back. And a lot of the members on the board have been through that process at least once.
And this, they meet at 1:15 on the third Wednesday. 1:15 to 2:45 is the schedule. That's what's posted on there. So that's it? Great, thanks for coming.
Thank you all.
Good to see you.
Really appreciate you coming in.
Nice to meet you.
Take care.
Okay, we're gonna keep moving, folks.
Up next, Pitten County Tobacco Control Policy. Risa and Jordana are here. Karen's remotely with us from Norway.
Ooh, she's a little bit kitted.
I think so, yeah. Looks kind of rainy there. Or is she, is she home already?
No, she is still...
Still there, yeah.
Where did she go?
Karen, are you there? Can you hear us? As if she was watching. Okay, welcome.
Is my mic on?
The red light's on, it is.
You gotta just turn it towards back.
There you go, yeah.
I speak quietly. Pass this around while I try to get this up.
I think we should move to have this meeting outside in the...
So nice day.
Nice day, thank you.
Colors are right behind Kelly. Because Kelly, I'm staring at you, I'm really staring at you.
No, that view of the mountain, great.
Wow, Eagle is beautiful, so either take your pic.
Yes, it's the golden behind you.
Okay, this is the big event here. Fantastic.
This is the big thing for the day. So my name is Risa Toretzky. I work for Pitten County Public Health. And I'm joined by Jordana Sabella, my supervisor at Pitten County Public Health. And I thought I would bring you a new image for the front of our slide today because I thought the girl on the yellow vaping got a little old. This is a nice comparison of the new advertising compared to the old advertising. So today, we're gonna talk about tobacco policy and follow up on the conversations that we've had before about policy. I handed out a short document that has some of the questions that we just want to clarify before we move on to talk about the, well, before we move on to the first reading of an ordinance for this. Am I meant to go through the AIS? Because I think we've gone through the AIS a few times before. Can I just, can I just go through the presentation? Is that okay?
Yeah, let's go through the presentation, yeah.
Okay. Excellent. So I just have a couple of slides just to make sure that we're all on the same page and I know that the public can see this as well, so just to bring us all together on this. And happy to answer questions as well. So just for context, we have in Colorado the highest rates of e-cigarette use among youth compared to the 37 states that did the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, what we call the Healthy Kids Colorado Survey in 2017. We are two times the national average. When we look at high school students from Aspen to Parachute in terms of youth vaping, we are close to three times the national average. And I looked at the numbers last night for Aspen High School specifically, we are four times the national average in terms of having ever tried e-cigarettes. Those numbers are higher than, sorry, when we look at use in the last 30 days, those numbers are higher than marijuana, alcohol use, or cigarette use in our kids. So it's just been a really surprising spike and I think in some ways really represents the loopholes that were available for the tobacco industry to bring a new product and have such a splash.
While you're on that slide, I'm just curious, how are those numbers derived?
So there's, that's a great question. Every two years, the middle schools and the high schools do a statewide survey called the Healthy Kids Colorado Survey. And that's very similar, or it's actually the same survey that other states in the country do, but they call that the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, so we just have a different name for it. And the kids do a computer-based anonymous confidential survey where they answer a lot of questions about their personal use and perspectives that they find.
And so it's a similar survey that's used throughout the nation?
Yeah. Yep. And I believe that the questions are the same and that's why they're able to compare them across the states.
Okay, thanks.
What are the differences in the colors?
Yeah, I was gonna ask the same.
I have 21 gray and 14 gray. Yeah, so we are Health Statistics Region 12 and the darker color represents more use and the lighter colors represent less use. And for the gray areas, yeah, it's rates. And for the gray areas, it had something to do with not being able to calculate those rates for the...
They almost look there like they're completely polarized. They're in contrast to each other, right?
Right.
So e-cigarette more than cigarette.
Right.
Okay, just comparing the two, that would make sense.
Well, for our region at least. For the other regions, it's not as much of a flip. And so this is both for youth use, but when we look at cigarette use among our kids here at the Aspen High School, our rates are still higher than the statewide average. And that goes for cigarettes, that goes for chewed tobacco. And it also goes for like the little cigarrillos that are used. So I was surprised by that. I didn't expect to see that our rates of use here of other tobacco products would still be as high.
So to clarification, but here it's Aspen to Parachute, so are you talking just Aspen High School now or Aspen to Parachute?
The 53% is the Aspen Community Foundation combines the four school districts from Aspen to Parachute. That's 53%. When we look at Aspen High School, it's 58%, close to 59%.
George? The other thing that's interesting, if I read this correctly, is that the higher uses are on the western slope, perhaps more in resort communities? Is there any correlation there?
I can't say that for sure, but I can say that when we look at the five school districts in Picken, Eagle and Garfield County, Aspen and Eagle have the highest rates of use among high school students. And those are our more concentrated resort areas, I guess. But otherwise, I don't know the correlation.
I wonder why that is.
It's a great question.
I was just wondering, how easy would it be to skew this? Could three kids skew this result? You know, it's a fairly small sample, I'm guessing, but I guess if you've done it over several years across, how reliable, the big question is how reliable?
I thought you said skew with this. I'm like, well, they put it in their hoodies.
Yeah, skew.
That's a great question. And I don't know that I have the best answer for you right now.
It's just such a hard thing to swallow.
Yeah.
It's really hard to understand this because you don't see kids vaping, you know, I don't see them on the street or in the alleys doing this, you know? So it's hard to understand it.
But if you ask the kids in the high school, they say they can't go into the bathrooms because everyone's vaping. They say all their friends are vaping. So we are, we are hearing a lot more about it. And when I ask students in a group, I hear a lot. I say, is vaping a problem? And they're like, it is a huge problem. Like, why are you even asking that question? So I think, I think yes, there have been studies done on the Healthy Kids Colorado Survey to determine the validity and reliability of the data because people say all the time, well, don't kids lie on it? And how do we know that these are correct? And the numbers are actually not that small when we combine the different school districts and look at it together. So we have some decent numbers.
So the kids are saying they can't go into the bathrooms in the high school. Maybe we should have a discussion with the high school principals.
We, yes, that's correct.
Yeah, that's a concern to me.
So, yeah, so we have been working really closely with the schools, up and down the valley, actually, and talking to them specifically about how they deal with this issue. I'm giving a talk at Aspen High School tonight and have been working really closely with the Aspen Assistant Principal on having good ways of managing this without sending everybody home on suspension for vaping because then they just go home and they vape more, they're more stressed and they vape more. And so we're looking at different methods, trying to bring in the coaches, the teachers. They have the school resource officers going into the bathrooms, the teachers going into the bathrooms. We're doing some prevention work and some education for the students, but also education for the teachers so that they know really what they're looking for as these products emerge. So, yes.
Heard that for the hard part. Is it a thumb drive or is it a vaping device?
Right.
Just so, I was at a teacher, parent, you know, high school parent meeting, orientation meeting with the principal and some other high school staff the other morning, and this was a big part of the conversation. And the questions came up, you know, is somebody monitoring the bathrooms? How are we, you know, so I know the parents are certainly aware of it and some are very up concerned and they're looking for solutions. So it's great you're doing this event tonight. And I know a lot of people are very concerned about it.
Yeah, and I think especially with the vaping illness that we're seeing, we're getting a lot more concern among parents and community. And so last week, Greg, you may have gotten this, we, the high school principal and assistant principal sent out as part of their newsletter some information about the vaping situation and the current illnesses and what's being done at the school. And we worked together on that. So we're trying to work really closely. I would say Aspen School District and Roaring Fork School District have been the most proactive about this issue, although I feel like we're all being reactive now because we're a little bit behind it. Yeah.
In your studies of this, the topic, are there any devices? Are there monitors that can detect a volatile organic chemical in a bathroom, for instance? Or something that would, you know, help monitor a situation, you know? So the alarm goes off in the principal's office or whatever. I'm just wondering, what tool?
Smoke detector?
Well, is it, but it's not smoke, right? It's a vapor detector. Do such things exist? And is that a reasonable thing to look at?
I bet they'd set off a smoke alarm.
So, yeah, so it actually won't set off a smoke alarm, but there are vape detectors. And the ones that are being marketed and considered for use in Eagle School District are actually somehow vaping and bully detectors.
And bullying?
I'm not exactly sure how the bullying part works, so I'm not exactly sure how reliable the vaping part is. But they are talking about putting them in. The question is how you deal with it. So if you have five kids in the bathroom and the alarm goes off and by the time a teacher gets there, you don't see any of them, or you do see them, right? What do you do? And so the Aspen School District has decided not to do it because they don't think it's a good idea. So they've joked about putting smoke detectors up and calling them vape detectors, just as a deterrent, but I don't think, I don't think that's gonna be the way forward. But we're talking about, how do you do that and how do you create a situation where kids, kids are not concerned about using the bathroom? And how do you create a situation where kids are not concerned about using the bathroom? And of course, now with the really sleek vape devices, you can just vape in the classroom, like, why bother going to the bathroom? But one of the things that they've found to be really effective in the high school that they didn't even put into place for this reason is that they are making kids put their cell phones on, in a cubby by the door during class, so that they can't use their cellphone during class. And it had nothing to do with vaping, but the kids have said that it cuts down on vaping because they can't text each other to meet in the bathroom, or meet outside, or whatever. So we're finding different ways. One of the things that the Aspen High School is looking at doing is creating a student group, so that we can work with students to create messaging and also create strategies that will really help the kids, because they're gonna know better.
So just to pick up on a little bit on a point you made, is the social element of vaping, you know, really driving some of this use among the youth?
So that's, that's a big part of what our understanding is, and I think there's a lot more to understand from the kids. I met with a group of kids who participate in the prep program, which works with kids up and down the valley this summer, and those kids told me it's not even about whether or not you vape, it's about whether or not you have a vape device, and that makes you cool. And a lot of kids have talked about how they thought their friends were their friends, and now that they don't vape, they can't be friends with them anymore. So we're hearing a lot of that sort of a thing, the peer pressure, the coolness, and I think, if you come to my presentation tonight, because it's on these slides, I'm gonna show some of the social media pictures, like screenshots from some of the advertisements from Juul and some of the other companies that have really promoted it as such a cool product. And that is the idea of messaging like this.
Well, that cartoon is not even, you know, that's what it looks like, I mean, it's just so obvious.
And this one is not necessarily like, I don't know about that for kids, but his name is Mr. Cool.
Right.
Which I think is amazing, because you can't have Joe Camel, but for e-cigarettes now, you can have Mr. Cool.
Yeah.
And you could have Juul advertised on the television set.
Which is, yeah, it's just, it's just been really interesting, the way that it's been regulated or not regulated. May I move on?
Please do, thank you.
Okay. And so just to remind us all that while it's called vaping, to give the impression that it's just water vapor, it really is an aerosol of a lot of different chemicals and contaminants like carcinogens that we know, as well as heavy metals that we're constantly trying to get out of the air that we breathe, and a ton of flavoring chemicals. And when the CDC is investigating this vaping illness, they are looking for which component in there that we didn't know was toxic is actually toxic, because they haven't found any bacteria or endotoxin or anything like that. So it's a matter of figuring out which of the flavorings, or which of the chemicals that go in to create the throat feel or things like that is actually causing some of this illness. And then there's a really high level of nicotine, ninety-nine percent of e-cigarette products have some nicotine in them, and that's really a concern when we think about kids and their vulnerability to addiction. In July, sorry, July first of this year, House Bill nineteen ten thirty-three went into effect, and that gives local governments or counties the authority to regulate tobacco products and removes the penalty, which was any municipality or county that talked about a tobacco tax, or even potentially raising the age, risk losing their share of the tax money that the municipality or the county gets back. That is no longer the case, and now the only time that a municipality or county will lose the share back is if they actually implement their own tax, but that's fair, because then you're collecting the money here. So what we wanted to bring to you today are some really simple decision points before we move forward, or I guess John moves forward on helping to draft this ordinance, so that we just make sure that we're all on the same page and we have the right things. So I put them here on this handout that you have, but I also wanted to put them up here in case people from the public are watching. So the first real decision point is to ask you if we agree that we're raising the minimum age of sale to twenty-one years of age, and that this will apply to all tobacco products? And actually, I should ask, do you want to go through each of these one by one, or should we talk about them all together?
It's up to the chair.
I think we've been over it. Give us the, we'll drill in if we need to, but I think, yeah.
Okay. So under Tobacco Twenty-One, the idea is that all tobacco products would only be sold to persons twenty-one years of age and older. And so we're asking that the, we're asking if the B O C C still agrees that the minimum age of sale would be raised to twenty-one years of age, and that this would apply to all tobacco products.
I think we've had a lot of conversations on this. Steve?
This would be effective if everyone in our valley did it. What are the other municipalities and counties doing in our valley?
Yeah, that's a great question, thank you. So one of the most important parts of the county agreeing to go forward with this is that Aspen and Snowmass and Basalt have already enacted Tobacco Twenty-One. So we now have this situation where we have these little pockets where kids can move between stores and move between areas to get the products. So...
Eagle is considering it.
Yes.
Carbondale is talking about it.
Eagle County decided they're putting forward Tobacco Twenty-One, starting November first. And then, oh, I can show you the slide, I think.
Carbondale, sorry, we got you off track.
Oh, it's okay, I'll just show you the slide.
Garfield County is a question mark.
So, yeah, so Garfield County is talking about it. They have their first work session on October eighth to talk about those areas, and then Summit County has gone forward with Tobacco Twenty-One, and now we have Carbondale, Glenwood Springs, and hopefully soon Newcastle will be moving forward with Tobacco Twenty-One as well. And Carbondale and Glenwood Springs also just put in place the full flavor ban like Aspen did, and Snowmass is talking about that on October seventh.
Great, George?
I certainly support this, and I know in all of these, it's worded that applies to all tobacco products, but just given the stats you had in terms of vaping, I wonder if we can also include that, just to highlight that as well.
Tobacco and nicotine, isn't it? Tobacco and nicotine products, just to be...
Tobacco and nicotine, including, however you wanna word, but I think vaping should be in here just, again, to raise that awareness.
Sounds good to me.
Kelly?
That'd be great, thank you.
I just had a clarifying question. If we did this Tobacco Twenty-One, would that cover Snowmass if they opt not to, or just don't take no action?
No, it's only unincorporated, yeah.
Taxes would apply there, but not the, okay, thank you.
And Snowmass is already gone with Tobacco Twenty-One. The only thing we're waiting on for Snowmass is to see if they go for the full flavor ban. And then the next area to talk to would be Basalt, to see if they wanna go for the full flavor ban as well. Okay, thank you.
In a recent conversation, it was brought up that there are all these other delivery devices for delivering nicotine. And so if you have something that was like, it used to be chewing tobacco, but now it's like a teabag sort of thing you can put in your lip that's just flavorless, pack of nicotine. That would apply here. It's not necessarily a tobacco product, but it would apply if we're talking about nicot- that's why we wanna include tobacco and nicotine. Now, my next question, we're gonna get to flavors, but when it says all flavored tobacco, that includes tobacco-flavored products, because they actually put tobacco flavoring in vapes. Now, is that included? Because in a previous conversation, it wasn't, I'm just, when you get to that?
I'm not sure what tobacco flavoring is, but if there is actual tobacco in the product, then that is...
So maybe that's...
You're talking the jelly beans that are tobacco flavored?
Well, no, there's vapes that are flavored like a tobacco, and somebody said, well, those wouldn't be included because maybe that's for cigarette cessation therapy or something. So how, that might be part of the conversation.
Let me maybe clarify. So the way that Aspen and Glenwood Springs and Carbondale have written their policies, they have excluded tobacco-flavored e-cigarettes, because there is a Virginia Slim flavor and there is a traditional tobacco flavor. So any e-cigarette that only has tobacco flavor, the consideration has been, we're not banning all e-cigarettes. We are banning the sale of flavors that appeal to kids, and so the ones that are tobacco-flavored have been left.
Okay.
Have been left. And that would be a decision for this council, and I would ask John's advice, and we can talk about that afterwards.
There's a reason that they've done this.
And there's a reason, right. The idea has been that there are adults, like, we, aside from the vaping illness right now, which I, which the CDC believes is specific to some chemicals that they haven't identified yet, there is international evidence that shows that potentially for someone who smoked two packs of cigarettes a year for twenty years, it might be better for them to move over to e-cigarettes.
A day, a day for twenty years.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, yes, two packs a day for twenty years, right. It might be better, and we actually don't know that, but countries like the UK are heavily promoting this nationally, from their public health department, for people as a harm reduction model. And we don't know, and the research isn't there, and none of these products has been approved as a cessation device, because really what happens is, we see that people switch, they don't quit. They move from cigarettes to e-cigarettes, a year later, they're still using e-cigarettes potentially more than they were using their cigarettes. But theoretically, there are, well, not theoretically, there are far fewer chemicals in e-cigarettes than there are in cigarettes. There's no tar, it's not combustible tobacco, there are fewer carcinogens, but there are still a lot of concerns. And so the idea is that for people who are smoking cigarettes and moving over to e-cigarettes, there's no reason that they need creme brulee or bubblegum. But if they're using tobacco flavor, that's not something that a kid is gonna be like, I wanna pick up that device because it's tobacco flavor, and so I think that's...
I don't know, I would question that.
Steve?
So I can see the vaping companies coming out with a product that's a vaping product that is flavored, but it has no tobacco in it. Doesn't have the addiction, but it has the habit-forming thing that kids who are already vaping, it gives them something, they could still be vaping something with their favorite mango flavor or whatever in it, and then when they turn twenty-one, they're, you know, they can go on, ride on vaping with tobacco products. I don't see any, I mean, we can't prevent them from, the companies from coming out with that product, but I bet you anything they will.
Yeah, I think that's true. So there already is that product out there. Kids say that they're vaping essential oils. For the most part, if it's, if it's an e-cigarette, it has nicotine. The problem is that with the current regulations nationally, they don't have to say that it has nicotine necessarily. And I don't know if we can ban those products under this, I have no idea.
Anything with tobacco, anything with tobacco or nicotine content, we can definitely ban. That's why the tobacco flavoring threw me. But anything with either one of those substances as a, as a component can be prohibited.
But if it doesn't have, like, if they're just vaping essential oils, or they're just vaping THC? Well, there's THC vape devices too. I don't think we're looking at banning those.
It's like smoking a bubblegum battery.
THC already has a restriction to twenty-one, at least on the open market. But Steve's point is interesting, to develop the mechanical habit so that you can transfer it to actual tobacco when you're twenty-one, certainly is a ploy and a deceptive move that would, that probably would have some traction with some consumers. But at any rate, the, if it's a product with just essential oils or some, you know, some other component ingredients that does not have either tobacco or nicotine as a constituent, you know, ingredient, then we wouldn't be able to ban it.
Yeah, well, I have two things, but that's too bad, because it's those other things in the vaping, the mechanism of vaping, that could be the thing that's causing this, these severe, serious lung, you know, episodes. So it's too bad. We don't really know the science yet, and we'll see how that progresses. The other thing George brought up, the vaping, and I thought we had a concern about the evolution of vaping, so now the companies will say, well, it's really not a vaping device, it's a, whatever they'll come up with. So we were gonna leave it more generalized than specifically including vaping? Did we have further discussion on that?
From what I've heard from the board, that there is obviously a concern with traditional tobacco products, chews or cigarettes themselves, or cigars, not to the extent, or vaping ground tobacco. But vaping being the latest mechanism for, you know, delivery of nicotine into the body is a, is a point of particular concern, so that we would mention that particularly.
So just to raise, like George said, the awareness, because I think on our campus free, our campus signs, doesn't it say, it says tobacco and vaping, doesn't it, or something?
It says smoke and tobacco free.
No, there's another inclusion on there.
I saw something recently that looked like it said vaping.
It's on our signs out there.
Yeah, there's three, three pictures. I think there's like a little vape, a smoke, something smoking, and something that kind of looks like chew.
Yeah.
If I could bring it back, just to the flavored tobacco ban, so once again, we're back on, we're agreed to abandon the sale of all flavored tobacco products at stores. And what you're telling us is that does include vaping devices. So we're covered there, nicotine delivery.
But are we gonna include tobacco-flavored in that?
Well, it's there, I don't know.
I just, I just don't know what tobacco flavoring is. If it's, if it's actual tobacco, then it can be...
It's not, it just tastes like tobacco, but it's not tobacco.
I don't know, that's beyond our pay grade.
Right? Isn't that correct?
Right, it's just, it's designed to taste just like the cigarette that they were smoking before. And I think the idea is that the tobacco industry has worked so hard to find other flavors to cover over that nasty tobacco flavor.
Like mint?
Like mint, and menthol, right. And bubblegum, and creme brulee, and so...
She likes that creme brulee.
Less, yeah, I do. That is, that is the flavor, that is less of a concern. I think, and this is me personally, I guess, but from what my understanding is of tobacco products, if you were going to ban a product completely, I would choose to ban cigarettes completely, because that is the most dangerous tobacco product that we have by far. The issue with the e-cigarettes is really the appeal to young people, the way that they're getting people hooked, the way that they're increasing the amount of nicotine, and a lot of that is related to some of these sweeter and mintier and covering flavors.
I can live with one and two that she's got.
I, yeah, I defer to you all.
Thank you, Steve.
So years before vaping came on the scene, chew was the big rage among high schoolers, and I don't know if there's any Scholl or Copenhagen that doesn't have the flavors in it, I think it's maybe all flavored, but that also would be banned. Do you have any, like, evidence of tracking the, sort of the switch from chewing tobacco to vaping? Is there, is there a trend of people switching, making that switch?
I don't know exactly from chew to vaping. I would say that, yes, that's a concern with the chew. We have one in five seniors who say that they used chew tobacco in the past thirty days in our high school here. There is some unflavored chew, I don't think it's very appealing, but when they asked in Carbondale, they went out to the co-op and they asked if they would be concerned if they banned flavors, they said no. I mean, we have some ranchers who come in for some school or whatever, and I think they'll still be able to get it. What we do see is that kids who are currently vaping will switch to other nicotine products. So we can see that, I'm not sure that chew would be what they would switch to, because that's just a whole different kind of mechanism and comfort level and things, but now they can use ZYN and things, and so if we can get rid of the flavors on products like ZYN, those little pouches that you put in your lip, I think that that would be helpful as well.
Okay.
Just one more clarifying question. What did Aspen do with regards to the tobacco-flavored product?
They allow tobacco-flavored products. They also make an exception on here for any product that is approved for cessation. So if the FDA has approved that product for cessation, it can come in strawberry, because that product is being used for people to quit and has a different kind of nicotine that doesn't give that really fast rate, doesn't give that fast spike, is less likely to cause addiction. So Aspen, Glenwood, and Carbondale have all made the except. They didn't really consider it an exception for tobacco flavor, they just said, anything that's not tobacco flavor basically has to be excluded.
But anything that's certified by the FDA for cessation is allowed?
Is allowed.
Okay, what else have you got for us here?
And then the only other questions are here about enforcement. So the idea is that we would like to know from the B O C C that you agree that conducting compliance checks would be an integral part of this policy, and that if, and John, we haven't talked about this one yet, but that if there is a violation of, of one of those compliance checks, that the retailer would be required to put in place a retail education, a retailer education program, so that all the clerks would be trained. Right now, most of the stores, if they use it, use the WeCard program, which you probably see on the convenience store shelves, and that's actually produced by the tobacco company. So it's a, they send out those little date things, but it's also a training for the clerks on how to card and why, why card. It hasn't been shown to be effective, but we have a free, easily available evidence-based program at the state level, and so I don't think it would be possible to require everyone to use it, but if they have a violation, then for sure you could put that as part of the response.
Okay.
And that's, that's all my questions, and then I just wanted to add that between now and next week, I guess, we're gonna figure out how that enforcement will be done and bring back a recommendation for you. And so there's some different options, and I wrote them out down here, and also to make sure that we figure out the frequency of compliance checks, which we usually recommend twice in a year, and then how we'll make sure that all the retailers are aware of these policies coming up, because I think that's something that we should do. And then we'll also bring back to you some recommendation for effective date.
Are we okay with this? Do you wanna show of hands? Show of hands.
Yeah, I, we have to do something, you can't just say, do it, and hope that they do, but I, I think we'll vet that a little more as it comes back as to how we're going to conduct compliance checks and how we're going to create the evidence-based education program.
I think the other thing that we can come back with is if a retailer is not in compliance when an enforcement check is done, what are those escalating fines that we're able to, to assign?
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Are we okay with this? Show of hands, nods?
Yeah, good to have it come back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your questions, they're excellent.
It's a bad taste in my mouth.
Literally. Come to my presentation tonight, it'll be fun.
And tell us the, the time and date of your, or time, it's today, tonight?
Tonight, today, 5:30.
5:30 at the high school?
Yeah, 5:30 at the high school.
And this will be a presentation on tobacco and vaping?
It'll be a presentation on vaping for parents, and it'll, we'll have some updates on the vaping illness and some talk about how to be a trusted adult with kids, and some conversation about what the system is doing.
Do you have a brochure or a flyer for that up that we could?
I have something on email I could send you.
Send me one, I'll post it, thank you.
And we should have the parents have their cell phones at the door.
And we'll have another one at the high school.
Running concurrent with that is the Longevity Project, which I'm going to go to at the Mountain Cell A. I'd be curious how many people at that are smokers versus non-smokers.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
All right, where?
Okay, up next we've got Rich. Administrative change to policy number eight dash 10, procedures, expenditures, purchases, guidelines. This is going to be exciting stuff here.
Oh, yeah, riveting.
Jason's leaving.
It must not be too much.
All right.
Mr. Chair, thank you very much. Board of Commissioners, Rich Engelhardt, Deputy County Manager, and I've brought some support with me today, if you want to introduce yourselves.
Andrick is Finance Director in this capacity.
Chris Davis, Procurement Manager.
So what we have provided, I don't have any slides, it was just in the handout that we had sent on the AIS or the Agenda Item Summary. Staff is recommending to the county manager change in the procurement policy that raises our small level of purchases from $10,000 to $25,000, which then sets the beginning amount for informal procurement requirement. But the policy calls for consultation with the Board of Commissioners as part of this, so we are here consulting you and letting you know kind of the, the requests we're making of the county managers. So a little background, back in 2005, the procurement code was changed, and at that time, the level was set at $10,000 or $999, and I've, and I've provided a graph on the second page of that AIS. And that has been changed from earlier years before that, that level was at $50,000. So it was very high to begin with. In 2005, the commissioners had approved the process to go ahead and move that back down and then put in place this consultation portion, instead of making it active through a resolution or an ordinance. So it now is administrative decision to make. So this, we're asking that it now go back up. I think that we have found over time that it served its purpose, that things have changed quite a bit in the purchasing world, and I think Chris and Ann can certainly vouch for that, but prices have gone up, and our new system has also kind of forced this change. We have incorporated our ERP system, which is our financial backbone for this organization, and within that, we've got a much better check and balance system for that. And one thing it has created is that all of these small contracts under the $10,000 mark have had to go to procurement before we could even do our invoicing to get our, our vendors paid. And I believe in the report, we have over 400 contracts a year that, that we are dealing with. And so it was creating some challenges in getting our vendors paid on a timely basis. So we sat down as a, as a team and consulted and decided that one of the best ways to handle this is to go ahead and raise that level. And I think with, certainly with our new check and balance in place, and just the fact that we do have some great professionals that are out there protecting our, our interest as a, as an organization and being good stewards of our money, we just don't see that there's going to be a big risk in doing this. In fact, we think it's going to potentially increase maybe even small businesses and be able to do business with, with us as well, and kind of cuts out that contracting requirement side. So with that, if, if you look at page two, the only real change on this is just to the purchasing amount. We'll still have the same signature requirements and contract requirements, and I might say that if there is something that comes in under that $25,000 mark that is a risk or that we do need to put into a contract basis, this does not hinder that at all. We'll still make sure that we've got a contract in place. Procurement will make sure that those are still developed prior to, to putting this in place, so.
Got a question from Patty here.
Yeah, I was here in 2005, and I, forgive me for not remembering. Why did we choose to Laura? What was the reason we chose? Does anybody have any idea? I mean, there had to be some discussion and reason why we would have.
I was not here.
I know, none of it, none of it. I was the only one here and I can't remember.
Any, any background on that at all?
You know, Patty, I, I could only speculate, because obviously I wasn't here either, but $50,000, where, I mean, we're, you're, you're looking at it 15 years ago now, and so that, that would almost be like a $75,000 to $80,000 purchase today.
It was just too high for.
In my head. And I, I think from a control environment and risk management perspective, that would be my guess why, why the county decided to roll it back at that point.
Maybe I missed that day.
Yeah, the, frankly, we will have better tracking going on in our new ERP system, so that will help us manage some of the, the risk associated, I, I think, with, with raising the limit. And just from a transactional and efficiency perspective, contracting for all of these transactions at this level, particularly because the pace of what we're doing and the, the amount of projects that, that we're taking on has increased a lot over the past five, particularly five years. You know, we were really looking at, do we need to, to add somebody to address the contracting issues? Or is it, from a risk benefit perspective, does it make more sense to change the levels? And so that's really what was presented to, to me. That made sense to me to change the levels from a risk benefit perspective, and we went to that consultation with you.
The other, the other question I had too, competitive process for larger purchases, that could be something as simple as we could buy bulk compost paper plates, get a better price break if we were able to buy it at that higher level rather than have to go through a contract to, to do it. So that would make sense, is that what the thinking was? The other, what, what is a Munis financial system?
That is our ERP.
Okay, so you fooled us.
We keep calling it different things every time.
Just to keep us questioning. I read it and I had no idea, municipality financial.
It's the name of the system built by Tyler.
Okay, so it's, it's, it's our new system, we just have some creative names for it, okay.
Got another question?
No, I think I'm good there for those sorts of things.
I want to hone in on something that Patty sort of suggested in her comment, because I guess what would help me unpack some of this here is, you know, contracting is getting to the point where you sign on a line between two parties, but really the responsibility that I want to understand a little bit is, you know, how we're protecting, getting good value, you know, for the county, and so, you know, that can happen in multiple ways. And I guess I want to understand what, how that's happening under $10,000 or under the $25,000 and above that threshold, that would be preserved regardless of this change.
Sure, and that'll be preserved, it'll just be kind of slid up the scale. So right now, for anything under $10,000, we require no procurement, they can just go out and buy it. Our recommendation is that if there is a risk, as Rich was saying, that they consult with us, show us whatever agreement they would be signing, and then if there is a risk exposure for the county, we will still put it on our form and send it to the attorneys to review. So then currently between 10 and 50, we require what's called informal, where they get a minimum of three bids and then evidence why we made this election out of those minimum of three. And then if the perceived value is going to be over $50,000, we go out to what's, what we call formal, which we put on bidnetdirect.com, and generally advertise that nationally, if not internationally. And that goes to anywhere from 1,000 vendors to potentially 5,000 vendors, and then that's sealed bid. Generally have pre-bids where we're, procurement is the only party, excuse me, let me catch my breath, I'm kind of going fast. We're the only party really communicating, so it separates county members or project leads from speaking with those contractors or showing any type of preference. So that's essentially how we maintain a competitive bidding process.
And so now it would be 0 to 25, 25 to 50, and then 50?
Correct, yeah, we're still maintaining that 50,000.
So that informal bid is that 25 to 50?
So it just narrows that window.
Sure.
We also, we have departmental signatures also, they have to sign off, so throughout the organization, they've got to elevate it up to have that sign off, that it's running through a few eyes, instead of just out, people just making deals out there without those departmental signatures, so.
Steve?
Yeah, I was concerned when I read that payment to some of the vendors is being delayed because we're just getting this backlog. So if we do this change, how many contracts per year do you estimate that we'll, we'll have to do? So it's 400 now, it'll be some reduction.
That's 400 new is the estimate, so this would reduce new contracts probably by at least 100. And a lot of the, the time constraint as Rich was alluding to is that on these smaller contracts, it's generally the smaller ones where they don't have a dedicated legal department to review the contracts, that that really takes a lot of time of back and forth. So that's not only going through the contracting phase, that's relatively simple, you know, we write in a scope of work, a dollar value, it's the back and forth with, you know, coming to what they can agree with financially for their insurance requirements, what kind of risk they're willing to take on for a small value contract. So for a $10,000 contract, if we're requiring them 10 to 50,000, we're requiring them to hold $2 million in general liability, that's, you know, $7,000 or $8,000 a year that they're having to add on to their insurance policy, so they're either jacking their rates incredibly high or they're not willing to do it at all. So I know this is a long-winded response to your question, but I think that it would, it would reduce it by probably about 100 contracts workload-wise, but the back and forth with the, you know, quibbling about small insurance requirements and small value contracts, that would be the real time savings.
Save, save a huge amount of time on their part and on our part.
Yeah.
George?
You have a note in the memo, revised P-card policy works in alignment. We don't really speak to what the revised P-card policy is.
Yeah, and Ann can talk to that. We, we have just recently gone through and dropped down our spending levels, the authority where you could spend up to quite large amounts, and we have really dropped those down and reduced those now. Because the P-cards were being used, until we got this system in place, P-cards were being used for some of these purchases, which really should have been under this policy here. So we have really tightened that up, and Ann can talk to that a little bit more detail.
In the past, employees were given direction by the Finance Department to put as much as they could on their P-cards, because we get a rebate from, from the company that provides the P-cards to us. And this led to employees, you know, buying things of substantially large amounts, which should have had a contract attached with them, and when we developed the procurement department, we tried to sort of bring, bring all of those types of transactions into the, into, under contract. So we reduced the limits on the P-card and directed employees that they are to be used for more incidentals and just small supplies under $10,000. So we're gradually doing that. But in the interim, as we moved to a new system, the system requires, you know, you set the limits that you can only pay an invoice over $10,000 if it has a contract attached, and some departments haven't got contracts. And so that's why invoices get held up, and so by raising the limits, we're doing that. So in finance, our responsibility is to pay the invoices, and we will determine what is the best way in which to pay them, whether it's by a check, wire, or our own P-card, so we can get those, still get those rebates, but we make the decision on how things are paid. And so we're essentially, we have much greater control over the transactions of the county.
And then with the new system, is it a better check and balances in terms of the use of the P-cards?
Yeah, absolutely. With the old system, you couldn't tell it to stop any invoice going through over $10,000 without a contract, whereas you can with this.
All right, great, thanks, great. Kelly?
Will there be an associated effort to kind of work with staff and employees about best practices for procurement? You know, I could just see, I, I just don't know what we would recommend as far as if somebody's looking for services or goods that are up to $25,000, how, what they might want to be thinking about and looking at this. And, and I also don't know if it, if this gets to that problem that, and you just sort of referenced about people entering into an agreement for goods and services without knowing they need a contract or something like that until it gets to the backend.
And, yes, actually in the wake of this and planning, I've got it blocked off on my calendar for October 24th to do a lunch and learn, not only for procurement best practices, but also for contracts management, how to try to get the best value out of the contractor as well by managing that relationship, and then also just kind of a general rundown on the transfer to Munis and how they can use tools in there to help them better manage their contracts, both for expiration and renewal when they're approaching their budgetary limits, all that as well. So I am planning on that. I just wanted to make sure that I knew the feedback on this procedural change before I started writing up and sending out an agenda, but that is planned, yes ma'am?
Thank you.
So it sounds like we've got a 25% reduction in, in contract paperwork with an increase in oversight through the new system. So I, I think it sounds great.
I have one quick question. Recommended BOCC action, it says the effective date of the policy change will be upon this review October 1st. Does that mean the effective date is October 1st? You guys are turning that around really efficiently.
We're making it so right now?
Yeah, what, what we'll do is we'll make it effective from our standpoint to where we can go into the system and make sure that anything that's in there will still work its way through. But if something happens coming tomorrow that, that could save this.
12-hour leeway.
Yeah, yeah, we'll give you 12 hours, but, yeah, we'll, we'll start getting the word out to the employees. You'll see it in the employee newsletter as well, and then we'll probably send just a formal notice to the E-Team and A-Team.
Other question I have real quick, how many P-cards do we have out?
I think we have, forgot, like, 200 and something?
How many employees do we have?
Like 315. So we want to try and reduce the number of P-cards, and actually, as a perfect example, yesterday we met with Brett at Dispatch because each one of his dispatches have a P-card, and they have to do their monthly reconciliation, and they forget, and they're trying, you know, obviously their job is more important than doing their P-card reconciliation. And so we're kind of like looking at each department individually, and so they will just have one P-card for all of dispatches, and so they will share it, and then the office admin person will do the reconciliation. So we're trying to sort of get a little more control over it like that, and Brett will keep the P-card and lock it up.
What I do remember in the past is that the commissioners had P-cards, because we traveled a lot, and there were sometimes we'd get stuck somewhere and needed, and for some reason, they were taken away from us. And I don't think it was for bad behavior.
I wasn't here.
Everybody at the table is going to, no, I actually, I was the one who was most efficient with my receipts. But I don't know if that's an issue for any of us who are traveling, but maybe something for further down the line if we're finding that.
Charlotte and Elena are the holders of our P-cards, is that right?
They're, they're their P-cards.
Yeah, we're, we're booking through them, and it's certainly a conversation we can have with the board. It's, they present an efficiency and a risk, and so that, that would be the conversation.
Because a lot of times staff is, because I'll be going out to get some stuff, go, just put on your P-card, I'm like, okay. Let's pee for Patty card.
Okay, thank you for coming in. I won't be putting the Tesla on my P-card.
Your limit will not be that high enough.
That's why we don't give you P.
That one would need approval.
Thank you, board, appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, what's next? We have got Review of Future Agenda calendars. Hey.
Yeah, so.
Almost on schedule.
Have a few items for you. We had the opportunity to meet with folks from the city yesterday to talk about the requested childcare discussion. I think we had actually put that on future agendas, I believe, for November 12th. In talking to them, it looks like November 19th, and combine it with our Board of Social Services meeting, so we would have, that is a main topic. Services meeting, so we would have, that is a main topic. It allows for a little bit more time, and it worked better for, for their schedules. So we will plan on bringing that discussion back.
I will be, in November 19th, I will be at the I'm Home Conference in Portland, Oregon.
I'm Home Conference?
We'll videotape it for you.
Call in.
It's, it's gonna be a first conversation. We can try and move it.
No, and I just want to make sure we have, well, it's okay.
So there is also, and you guys may have seen this through C.C. 4.C.A., that there's a legislative training that's being scheduled for October 24th, so coming up later this month. The C.C. 4.C.A. Executive Director will be in Aspen for a CAS meeting, and they are offering to, to potentially set up some time. We could add it to future agendas if there are more than three commissioners, or if just our C.C. 4.C.A. reps. Did you guys get an email on that?
If it was buried in their weekly newsletter, I might have missed it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's where, I'm sure it was in there.
Our concern would be is if there's more than three commissioners that might be interested in attending, since the C.C. 4.C.A. Executive Director will be in town.
Why don't you just notice it?
Yeah, I'd plan, I'd, I would want to go to it.
Great. And then we are looking at two dates, potentially just to spend an afternoon together, that'd either be November 8th or December 6th, and it'd be to do a little bit of our retreat follow-up. And, you know, just have a conversation about some of the work plan items and such coming up. We'd look in the afternoon for those dates, and one to see if that would work for either of those dates. Either November 8th or December 6th. I don't think the I'm Home Conference is then.
No, but I probably have something, and you guys can have your, November 8th is, we have a housing stability meeting.
In the morning.
But that's from 8:30 to 11:30.
Yeah.
It's a Friday.
I would prefer November 8th.
And on the 11th of December, did you say?
Uh, December 6th.
December 6th?
Good for now, either one. Let's put it down for the 8th and see how that goes.
Of November?
Yeah.
Does that work?
Mm-hmm.
And then we are looking at the site visit to the Bavarian on October 15th. We already reduced exec time, which we think we may need. We wanted to suggest leaving here at 8:45 in the morning, and that should leave plenty of time to be back here for exec at 10. Would that work for you guys?
October 15th?
Correct.
Highland Bavarian? Eight, you said 8:45 a.m.?
Yeah, we'd leave here, we'd leave here at 8:45.
Right, thank you. Yeah, looks fine.
That work?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's all I have.
Patty?
There seems to be some confusion on the October 23rd regular meeting agenda. We have, and I talked to, I talked to Ellen Sizano, we have under individual consideration, item number three, ordinance for renewable energy-related land use code text amendments, certification of Picking County zoning plan, and then at the bottom, we have renewable energy-related land use code text amendments, and so I don't, and that's down as a first, it's confusing. So Ellen's gonna clear that up, because then we again have it on the November 20th meeting. So she's gonna figure out what we're doing, who's on first, where it's supposed to be, if it's first, second reading, and when, just so everybody knows that we're not reading it twice on the same day.
Right.
Calling it first and second reading. The other thing is, we do have the solar on, on the 23rd, is that because we need to continue it again, or are we not? Because we're continuing until that special meeting on?
16th.
This?
16th, so that should be.
This is on here, on the 13th.
I'm sorry, 13th.
It should be the 13th.
We keep saying, I, I don't know why I'm stuck on the 16th.
And it says, it says continued, oh, from September 24th. So can we clarify that, because why do we have it on the agenda? Just, it's just all over the place, it's gonna confuse the public. Are we hearing it on October 23rd to continue it to the 13th, or what? Did we already, I thought we already continued it to the 13th. So can we just clarify that, so the public actually knows when we're having that meeting?
Yeah, because you did continue it to the 13th.
So we don't need to see it again on the 23rd? Because I saw it on there and told Ellen we were gonna be hearing it that day, and we didn't want to be hearing the energy code stuff and that all at the same day. Because we wouldn't have the energy to listen to the, do the solar energy.
Leslie, I think, knows that, it's just a matter of taking, getting it off that agenda.
Yeah, we do, well, that's why we need to just have it clarified, because I got a call from the public, did you already hear the solar? I'm confused.
Right. Okay, anybody else? Is that it for you, John?
Yes.
Okay, so what do we have next? We've got project updates. Jody Smith is here.
And I can hear them, they're working.
They are working.
Diligently behind George and I.
Pretty quiet, actually.
Somebody's working?
Pretty quiet.
It's because there's a cord going.
Hey, thank you. Jody Smith with the, I'm the facilities director for Picking County, and once a month, I come before the board and give you a little update on what projects we're working on. And today, we're gonna talk about the courthouse project, which is going on right next door. The Health and Human Services, we have a small remodel happening there, and then the Picking County Jail, we're about to kick off another project there. So that is what we will be talking about today. And I have just a high-level introduction of each project, then some photographs, and then you're welcome to ask questions or interrupt at any time. So the first project is the Picking County Courthouse. We are in week three. We have not had any real major surprises, although our demolition for Phase 1 is 80% complete already. That is huge.
That's big.
We did, I just did get one email about a wall in the new probation area that they opened up and found like the, one of the joists weren't connected, somebody had cut it years ago, and so we're, we'll just fix that stuff, but still, that's just not the worst thing that could have happened. So, so I think we're in really good shape. And I'm gonna show you some pictures, but the majority of the ceilings have been removed. And let me just remind you, Phase 1 is all, the majority of the garden level, with the exception of the restrooms, and the two offices that are occupied by the DA and probation, Alpine Legal Services, and we have a temporary jury room down there. And then the, and then the entire main level is in Phase 1. Phase 1 started three weeks ago, and will go through probably the beginning of February, and then that's when we will move everybody to their main, to their permanent locations on the main level. Probation, or, yeah, probation and DA will come up, courts will go down, we'll use the third courtroom. So, and then we'll kick in on Phase 2, which is the two rooms downstairs in the garden level, and then the upper floor with reconfiguring a little bit of the courtrooms and, and that back area, so making rooms for judges. So with the Phase 1 demolition, again, all, most of the ceilings have been removed in the lower level, some of them had to remove, be removed on the main level. We're patching very large gaps in the floor, and you'll see some of that. When we pulled up the flooring, you know, just over years and years of work, people have just cut little holes and patches and ran wires and cabling through. They're relocating ductwork and electrical work, along with our data wiring, that some of those bundles are, you know, five and six and eight inches of just wiring, so we're creating a single path, or we'll have a, a single path throughout the whole building, so we can start using a corridor rather than punching holes as we go. They have removed the treasure service counter, and we are reusing that in the DA's office, and you're gonna see that leaning in the hallway, framing the interior walls, we're already starting to frame, we'll, which is really crazy at three weeks. The main entrance ADA lift, work begins this week, maybe Thursday, and that will, again, be starting outside where the lilac bush is, and then making that cut, and you're gonna see a picture in here as well. The work that's outside your window here is the relocation of the roof drains. They're bringing all of them out to this side, and then to the appropriate storm drain, so that's kind of what happened there. That was scheduled to be in Phase 2, but we just had this window of opportunity that would save us time and money and disturbance, so they just hit it, hit it now, and it's almost done. So that, that whole thing will be closed up by the end of the week.
Okay, the treasures customer service counter, that's that historic one, right? With the little rods, okay, perfect.
Yeah, it's so exciting.
I was closing my eyes, looking at what the counter, yeah, that's great, that we're, of course we are keeping that, that's.
So, oh, I have relocate.
Yeah, back over, that's fine.
The, the grant update is that we are still waiting for a word on the DOLA grant request that we submitted for $200,000. We've sent in a couple of clarifications, so we're hoping to hear back within the next few weeks. And then the Colorado Court Security Fund grant, that was resubmitted, that Phase 2 one, and we asked for $100,000, and that is still in discussion impending. So again, I think both of those, we'll hear something back shortly, so. So on to the photos. Some of you have seen this out your back window, but the photo on the left is where we're putting in those two six-inch lines to, for the roof drains, to get them into the proper storm drain. On the right-hand side, you will see, this is where we had to cut the floor on the garden level, and I thought it was very interesting, because, I don't have a, oh, there it is. You can see right here, that was a stone floor, and somebody poured concrete over it. So we had to cut this floor open to put our plumbing in, and get some of the floor outlets and stuff in for the third courtroom, so all of this is on this side of the courthouse. The.
Redstone, flagstone store, floor.
No, it's all been covered, so.
But it was, it was original.
Originally, that's what, original floor was a stone.
It looks like it, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, pretty sad. But it was kind of neat to see it. But there would have been no way, even back then, to accommodate ADA and, and level flooring.
Right.
Based on the way that, that the, the regulations call for now. This picture I thought was interesting. The one on your left is the floor joists, so I'm looking up into the ceiling, and all of that is charred wood. There was a fire in this building at some point, and it just was in that back office behind probation.
Yeah.
So, yeah, and so I had the fire department over talking about something else, and I said, oh, come on, you gotta come see where this building actually had a fire, and I also.
There's no history?
Jason from the newspaper is going to do a little research and see if we can't find when that happened. As you recall, a sheriff used to live in this building. I don't know, maybe 10 sheriffs back, I'm not sure, but we wanted to kind of get a little story on that, so. But although the stone is charred, the wood is charred. And then on the right, you can see in the third courtroom downstairs, we're just taking all that ceiling out.
Wow.
On the left side, you can see where we're already framing in, this is the old sheriff's office, so we've already cleared it all out, we're starting to frame up. This will be the new probation office. You can see they have a customer service counter, and then a door, and then their office is in the back. And then on the right-hand side is where that lift is going, so on the lower level there, you can see the lilac tree behind, outside the window. So we had to remove all of Joe DeSalvo's floor, so that's gone, and, and then we'll, we already poured a slab last Thursday on this, and so we're ready to open this up and get the lift going, so. There's the.
Where will the lilac tree go?
We have not found a place for it to go. I've also done a little bit of, of research from some gardeners, and they said that unless it's dormant, it may or may not survive.
It'll probably survive.
My experience is, is that they generally survive, but we just don't have any, I even asked the fire department yesterday if they had any place to put it, or, so, yeah. So we'll see how it comes out, and.
Maybe, maybe Cozy Point can use a lilac. He said he'd take it.
You have to put up a plaque.
And then, so again, kind of touching on that historic preservation, is that we want to, you know, we're having this opportunity to save the treasures.
That's pretty cool.
Customer service that will go in the DA's office, so that's the first thing that they'll see, and it'll be a secured area behind. And then also the vaults, there are two of these, so those are being preserved in the original scope, as I read it, it was to take out the inner door, because there's two panelled inner doors in there too, and they were to be demoed, and we were able to work around that, so they're just staying intact. So, you know, just protect the building.
Do we have any history on those doors?
I don't.
Put Jason on that one, too.
Okay. And then you can see the lower level, and part of the story on this is, yes, we have a mess, we're under construction. You know, my staff are doing the best they can to clean the operate, the offices that are still operating, but you know, there's some dust out there, and people have been really great, all of the tenants so far. This is probably worst-case scenario here, but, yeah, so they're cutting the floors and getting ready for the plumbing, and then on the right side, you can see that was your old commissioners' meeting room.
That's your commissioner meeting room lamp.
And again, I have that light fixture down in my office, we're doing everything we can to preserve, reuse, repurpose, and recycle, so where we can. This floor in here won't be hardwood, but you know, the ones upstairs in the hallway at the public areas will be hardwood with a carpet runner, and we're still working on the color scheme for that. On the 10th, I have a floor person coming in to do, to buff the floor in a spot and do a test, so we can see what it will actually look like before we make some selections. And then if we have to steal any flooring, we'll steal it out of here and put it in the hallway, if there's anything we need to reuse to, to make those hallways and the public areas look really amazing. Any questions on the courthouse?
Questions?
Okay.
Just schedule the cutting into the outside wall during the I'm Home Conference.
So I'm out of town. Thank you. I really appreciate that, actually, that's a really good idea. Either that, or you're gonna see me chained.
Civil disobedience.
Well, there's already been a few bets on that.
See me chained to that lilac bush.
Okay, the next project.
The blindfold over.
Is the Health and Human Services renovation. We are week nine of a 12-week project. In the last few weeks, we were able to put a new flooring in the day center, the homeless day center, where now we have hard surfaces in there, and they're gonna be so much easier to clean up, and we were able to absorb that into our budget of this project, and it made a huge difference. So the restroom is ready and tiled, except for, we're waiting for the detention. So the restroom is ready and tiled except for we're waiting for the detention grade shower insert to come in and that kind of limits people's shower time so that we can manage our water better and manage our, our other equipment. So again, kind of looking at that climate and how we can improve some of that stuff. So we still don't have a ship date on that, but we're hoping it's coming in soon. Public Health and Human Services suite, the ceiling grids are installed. Ceiling tile will be done next week. It's painted. The floor will be installed in the next week. The wall system is coming in. This is very much like your wall systems here. So they'll have the glass in the bottom and the glass door, sliding doors. So that's the 15th through the 17th. The furniture comes in on the 21st and 22nd. And then we're gonna move on the 24th. I have a meeting with Nan later this afternoon to just do a double check-in on what date we'll work for that move. Because we are moving people from South Side. We're moving people downstairs. We're moving people out of here. So, so, but that's where that is. Again, kind of showing you that our contractors being very conscientious. They took one ton of metal to the recycle center. So they separated all of that. It was super awesome to see. And then you can see where they're just opening ceilings and, but all of that's put together now again.
That was a, a construction and demolition recycling by the contractor before it goes landfill. I hope everybody's.
Yeah, they sorted out all the metal.
That's great. Well done. Thank you.
Stuart Custom Builders has done a good job on that. So again, all of this is gonna be completed here in the next few days. Any questions on that? So the next project is the jail basement evidence storage for the sheriff's office. I did highlight over here, the yellow areas where we are, where the work is being done. So this is Rio Grande here. You pull up into the driveway. This is an overhead door here. And then this goes into the Sheriff's Sallyport in this building where you are now, just to orient you. So this is our work area. It's not a huge amount of work, but it's meticulous to make sure that we get the right lighting, the right paint, you know, for reflection, all of that stuff. The only thing that we're adding down here is putting a new door here in a wall. They're getting a new counter and sink here. We're closing off in this door to the generator and then adding a door here so we can still service that. But there will be no access for anybody to come in here except for the sheriff's office. So our design is complete. The permit is in. The start date will probably in a few weeks. And then our facility staff are in the process of moving out. Again, I've talked about the highlights there. The only item that's kind of pending at this point, because I don't know if we can afford it, is to put a new overhead door on that basement. But as we get into the project and if I see if there's any savings, then we'll put it towards a new door. I'm not asking for funding at this point. That may be reevaluated with the sheriff when he gets back to decide whether or not. But we want to get started and see what it's like, so.
This is replacement door, right?
So this is, this is the area that, that the sheriff is taking over. So our guys are moving out of here. This is where they have all of their tools and equipment and nanny noo-nies. So they have taken over the old translator office. So they are now moving into here with their storage and organizing. Beautiful time for us to recycle, repurpose, reuse.
And memorize.
Because we've been getting rid of a few things that were bought for a one-time purpose, like a ADA ramp for the elections. And it's no longer needed, but it was expensive. So I have it in the back of my truck and I'm trying to find, you know, a hospital or a senior center or somebody that, you know, a senior citizen that could use it. It would just be nice to donate that out to the community rather than go in the metal recycling bin, so.
Ask Steve. He's gonna participate in the little things. What's the name of that? Maybe he'll find somebody.
Yeah, I was gonna just suggest check with Chad Fetterich and see. Put the word out. Maybe they know somebody who, who needs that right now.
Yeah, and I know, we called the hospital and they didn't want it or didn't, couldn't repurpose it at that point, so, yeah. But I'm not gonna throw it away. It's, it's gotta go somewhere.
As soon as you can throw it away, somebody will call you looking for it.
Maybe somebody out there will hear this.
Maybe it could be stored somewhere in the closet, you know, the storage closet.
In the basement of the jail.
Senior Center for when all of a sudden, somebody will need something like that and that'll be the right size.
Yeah, they're, they're, it's an eight-foot long.
Maybe John can.
Two pieces. It's pretty nice.
He keeps riding his bicycle. John will need it.
Hey. All right, well, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jody.
Thanks, Jody.
Okay.
Can I ask, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can we, since we have staff here, can we do the application for the special event liquor license and then do open discussion?
Sure. Keep things moving. Let them get out of here. Thanks, Jody. See you soon.
Thanks, Jody.
Come on up, Jeanette. We pushed you to the top of the agenda.
Ed is probably happy to sit here another half an hour and not have to be outside working.
Yeah, he already picked up a lilac bush. Don't forget. Talk to Jody about that lilac.
Free lilac bush, historic object. Founded by Eloise Ilgin in 1921 or something.
I've tended to it ever since.
And just so you know, there is history on that fire. I could pull it and, and send it to you all. It was actually, the sheriff at one time was also the janitor. And that was his quarters and that's where the, when the fire started. I'm not exactly sure why, but it is, it is in the history and I will pull up for you.
Let's see if Jason, we'll let Jason know.
Cigar ash fell into the pine saw.
No, I think it was his stove or.
We can get, is that a new job description for Joey?
Don't even say. He stays on your good side.
Yes.
Anyway, I'll, I'll find the minutes and, and get them to you all.
Oh, great, thanks. If those walls could talk.
Jeanette Jones Clerk to the board. And I have with me at the table today, Eden Vardy with Farm Collaborative. And I don't know if I'm saying that right. I've been practicing all afternoon.
You got it right.
Did I get it? All right. And this is for a special event liquor permit for October 3rd for a special event fundraiser that they're having. And hence the lateness of this, at the, they had everything in place for their event. And at the last moment, somebody donated liquor for the event. And because they're selling tickets and opening it to the public in order for them to serve that, it was wine, wine, I believe, that was being donated.
Some wine and then marble distillery as well.
Okay. They have to have a special liquor permit and, and I tried to accommodate them. We were just here at the last minute and apologize for that. But it's a good event and it's a good fundraiser for these folks, so.
So since we have Eden here, would you like to take advantage of this opportunity to explain to the public what this event is and if there's tickets still available, how to get ahold of them?
Sure. So I'm Eden Vardy with the Farm Collaborative. And this event takes place at our headquarters on Cozy Point Ranch. At that headquarters, we perform primarily, primarily two functions. The first is connecting children and community to nature through farming and food. So essentially providing a space to connect to where our food comes from. And then the second is solving our global climate challenges with local food production. So essentially identifying how to both reduce our carbon emissions in our food systems, which by many estimates accounts for up to 60% of all global greenhouse gas emissions is tied to our food system. So in other words, our, our greatest contributor to climate change. So how we can turn that around on the front end and then on the back end also draw it down. So sequester carbon in the soil through regenerative agriculture practices. So that's what we're doing out at the farm. And we were, we're on City of Aspen open space land. About two years ago, we expanded from two-thirds of one acre to 15 acres where we're actively cultivating and stewarding the soil and the, the resource for future generations. And so this event will be our inaugural, essentially dinner program out at the farm. And so it will be a farm-to-table dinner, celebrating the yields from the farm from the year. And we do have some tickets available. Very limited, we're actually, right? I think there's only maybe less than a half dozen left that are available on our website, which is thefarmcollaborative.org.
And how much are they?
$100.
George? So since this is a, a last-minute request and donation of the wine for liquor licensing, do we have staff that will be tips trained?
The, the, it'll be, yeah, the, the, it's being hosted by a caterer, Mark Harden. And he will, the, all the service will be coming from him. Or will be kind of get your own type of thing. Which I understand if it's, if people are pouring their own, then it's, then you don't need the, the, what do you call it?
Tips train.
Really? So people just sort of pour their own wine and, and go at it?
Kind of family style is, is what I understand. Now, we will have the caterer there, so if that is a problem, we can have the caterer.
To oversee the.
Well, I can see some potential problems with that. I mean, usually with liquor license, we always have tips trained servers, right, Jeanette?
We recommend it. It's not required by, by the legislation, by the state, but we do highly recommend it. And it's my understanding the caterer does have tips training.
So they'll, they'll have people pouring it probably.
And monitoring that.
Well, that's what Aiden said, is people be sort of self-serving to raise the question.
And we, and we can, I mean, we don't have to do it that way. That was, that was an idea, but it doesn't have to happen that way. We can have the caterer do all the.
I mean, I'm sure most people are responsible, but, but it's just always the, the chance of someone without even realizing it. And then you're out on Highway 82 and probably, public transportation, probably not. People are probably gonna be driving in the evening. I would rather not have self-service with a liquor license.
And George, we could make that a condition on the license.
That there's oversight by the tips train.
Reasonable.
And I bet a lot of his catering staff probably has tips training. So that's a good idea, George, just have that oversight.
It's one of the, that intersection is this, one of the scariest, depending on the time of day. So that's a good point. Questions, comments?
I have just a quick side note. I ran into somebody yesterday who asked me how you keep the foxes out of the hen house.
So the.
Philosophical question.
So we have three hen houses, so it's different for each one. Two of them are chicken tractors, so they're mobile. They, they kind of follow the sheep out in the fields. And that's probably the ones that they were asking about.
That's when they saw, they saw like foxes at the gate.
Yeah, we have a lot more coyote than fox that kind of hang out and watch.
Maybe they could have been coyote.
But the, the way that that works is there's modular electric netting that surrounds the chicken coop. So that's kind of the first line of defense. We actually watched a coyote walk up today and test his lock and run fast in the opposite direction. But the, the, most, the, the majority of, of hunting activity happens just after sunset. And on our hen houses are equipped with basically solar-operated doors. So just after the sun, they, there's no battery back. It's just a solar panel. And so the solar panel is charging the door to stay up. And after the, the sun sets, the door just kind of automatically falls down. And, and our hens are typically.
Probably the hens are in before the.
They are, yeah.
So if a really brightly lit jet flies right over on final approach, will that make the door open for the fox?
I, I think it takes a little more than that.
The hens to see it. Somebody else said there was an owl in there? Have you had issues with owls?
I had the owl experience about six years ago.
That was, and that was over in, that was in the farm park, so that's more of our, kind of our, our coop that's with the programs.
Right.
And yeah, we had a, we had a great horned owl who actually came in and got stuck inside.
Right.
And so we had CPW help to.
Come out, get him out.
Oh, another one, okay, because I, I released one there one morning years ago.
He came, he came back and got stuck the second time. He doesn't, he's not around anymore.
Before you guys take an action, I don't believe you've convened a special meeting.
Oh, we have to a special meeting for this. Oh, you're right. I see that. Thank you.
I moved to.
Somebody should be reading this agenda.
Do we need to have a motion to go into a special meeting to convene as?
You're, you're, it's the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay, so we're still us. We're not some other special board.
Convening a special meeting for the purpose of adopting a.
So we have a motion?
I'll second it.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
So we have to start over?
We can just repeat everything.
I'll move, I'll move to approve the application for a special event liquor license submitted by the Farm Collaborative with the provision that the serving of the liquor and wine be supervised.
I have tips, I have tips, qualified, trained person. We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
I think I'm on the list. I think we're going to this.
I think you are coming.
Yeah, I'm excited. I'll be supervising the liquor.
Yeah, he's, he's our tip server.
And we should add, we're gonna change that approval and Greg will not be supervised.
You've already approved it, so.
Thank you, thanks, Jeanette.
And thanks to John for allowing us this opportunity for a special meeting. Thank you.
And thanks for expediting it and getting him in here to do that.
Thanks. Thanks, Eden.
Okay, we have to adjourn the special meeting now.
I move to adjourn special meeting.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, done that. I would just follow Jeanette's instructions. Do we have anything else left on our?
Sorry, we've got a couple open discussion items. I'll invite Charlotte up. And given our, our confusion over the past couple of weeks, we thought we'd get a jump on the 2020 calendar review and identifying dates there.
I'm gonna wait until the week before and change the schedule.
And we will be bringing this back to you again. We usually adopt this calendar, but we thought we'd start reviewing it.
Yes.
Didn't even get to Halloween and we're already.
Well, we're already scheduling things for January, so.
Well, and Walmart has Christmas decorations out, so.
So I just basically did the holiday work sessions, regular meetings. We haven't scheduled the LCC retreat yet, of course. I do have the CCI summer and winter for 2020. Dates on here as well. So just kind of wanted to put this in front of you, let you guys look it over or see if there are any changes that you wanted to make.
Yeah, just quickly, just off the top of my head, I see on December.
There's only one meeting.
You're, you're missing the work session on the 1st and then you don't really have any meetings, regular meetings. It seems like Wednesday, the 2nd and the 16th should be our regular BLCC meeting.
Well, the CCI will be, the conference will be through the 2nd. So that's the reason that the first regular meeting is on Thursday, the 3rd. But you're right, I will add the 16th will be the second regular meeting for December.
And I guess, and this is way, way down the road, but it's just depending on what's on that agenda, you know, future agenda. Since you only, we'll still have a quorum here probably even on the 1st, even if two commissioners go to CCI. So, but that's, we don't need to figure that out now.
Okay, well, I can move it to the 2nd if you like and we'll.
One thing we want to make sure that Yom Kippur is.
Already checked it out.
It's September 27th and 28th.
Right.
September?
2020, yep, begins September 27th and ends the evening of September 28th. At least according to this Google search, so.
Yeah, that's what I had found also. And Rosh Hashanah is then 18th through the 20th of September, so.
Okay.
There as well.
Good. Great. Looks good to me so far.
Well, why don't you guys look it over, see if there are any other dates? Well, well, if you could let Charlotte know and then we can make any adjustments and bring back a final for approval next year.
Probably I'll look at spring break, March 2, last week of March.
We don't take, change our meetings for spring break.
I might be going.
So do you want to move that regular meeting in December to the 2nd? So it'll be the, I'm sorry, it'd be the, yeah.
From the 3rd to the 2nd?
2nd and the 16th.
Fine with me.
You don't plan to go to the conference. Those two will go, probably.
For the CCI?
I don't know. I'm still like, yeah.
So far, it's hard to.
CCI is not my favorite conference, just organization.
You're learning.
But that didn't take long. I'm impressed. I don't, I think we should keep it on the regular. Should we keep it on the regular date?
On the 2nd?
Let's keep it on the regular date and if there's a problem, we can discuss it. We're far enough out.
Right, it's a long ways out.
Yeah, let's go back to regular.
We'll leave it to George to change it for us. You're gonna go right, George.
Okay, thank you.
If you were planning on going to CCI. Okay, and if, uh, you were planning on going to CCI winter conference this year, we need to start thinking about that, too. So just let Elaine know if you're gonna go. She'll register you and get all your, uh, reservations made. Thank you.
I'm gonna go.
You are. Okay.
Okay, thanks, Charlotte.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Charlotte.
I only had one, shoot, I keep forgetting my, only had one more item, and I probably should have done this during, uh, future agendas. But, um, you all may have received an email that on October eleventh from nine until one, there's gonna be, um, a, a gathering of regional and local officials at the Basalt Vista, um, project. Um, there'll be a lunchtime conversation on valleywide initiatives to combat climate change and reduce greenhouse gas emissions, so, um.
That's from, uh, from Bill Infante at Basalt County.
Yes, Bill Infante, um, had, had sent that out. There'll be reps from RMI, Holy Cross, Core, um, and, and others that they're trying to pull together, so that's.
It's October eleventh?
October eleventh from nine to one. Um, they wanted to be sure an invitation was extended to commissioners.
I didn't get it.
Well, consider this the invitation being extended to commissioners.
You got this morning if anything.
I was on my.
Charlotte, Charlotte had it. Maybe she hasn't.
Can you forward it on to me?
Yeah, we can forward that on.
Yeah, I didn't get it either that I.
And actually, I didn't either. Shar, I think Charlotte got it. So we'll forward that on. And then if you could let Charlotte know if you're going, so again, if there's more than three, we can just.
I'm, I'm already on the program for that, to go to that, and then I just let her know. I, I was the one who told Bill to send it to Charlotte so she could invite the board.
Okay.
So.
We'll get that pushed out to you.
I'm at CCI that day, the Legislative Committee.
That's all I had.
Um, I forgot, it actually reminded me when Jeanette was talking about something, of the elections. Uh, we should have Janice come in, and she can come in during a regular meeting, just during public comment period, when the timing gets right, to give an update and status of elections where they're gonna be held, when, what's happening with it, probably.
Ballots are coming up.
Today's October first.
Ballots will be out pretty soon, like a couple of weeks, two weeks?
Voters can walk in and get a ballot now if they're going out of town.
Wow.
Um, overseas ballots are already mailed, and ballots go in the mail, um, to everyone else October fourteenth.
Wow, so we may want to get Janice in quick, earlier, and then even a repeat afterwards.
Like next week.
I guess there is one more item, and it's, uh, I was not here for it, but Patty, I think at the end of the last meeting, you had brought up a constituent concern about the loss of habitat at the airport parking project.
Thank you for following up.
Yeah, can let me fire, my computer just went to sleep and it has.
The sage habitat, I think, I think he meant on the berms that were taken out.
Yeah, so the, the berms, the total project area is right at about eight acres, it's seven point nine nine acres. Um, the, the berm acreage is one point five five acres, but that's not contiguous acreage. It's broken up, um, between existing parking lot and, and travel areas. It's not, um, it's not contiguous or, or prime habitat. There may be, um, some animals nesting or, or living in there, but this, this would not be prime habitat. So it's not eight new acres of disturbance, and it's not one point five five.
I'll be out there tomorrow, maybe I'll swing through. I'll be out there.
Previously disturbed land.
Yeah, I'll count how many voles or.
It had been previously disturbed, and, and I know we had had efforts to replace, um, revegetate with, uh, natives. So there may be some sage in the middle there.
I'll check. I'll go by there tomorrow. Could you send me the acreage numbers?
Yeah.
What was it again?
So the total project area is seven point nine nine acres. Um, there's one point five five acres of, um, berms.
Okay.
All of it has been previously disturbed, all, you know, although it's been in that condition.
I'll, I'll let him know, send him an email. Thank you.
I, I have something. I just, um, I don't know if, was it in the paper yesterday? Discussion about the ballot questions and whether Picken County will take positions on CC and DD. I forget which one's which. One being the gal, the debrusing for statewide measure, and the other being, um.
Gamble, or sports betting.
Yeah, sports betting, and that revenue going towards, uh, the Colorado Water Plan funding.
And transportation.
So I just wanted to, um, touch, well, talk about this a little bit. I was just at the Colorado Basin Roundtable Meeting last week, um, Wednesday, when I had to leave our meeting early to go to that. And part of the discussion was, um, kicking off the updates to the basin implementation plans, which are where the individual nine basins, um, either rewrite or revisit those plans that then list the projects that would apply for Colorado Water Plan funding. That's essentially the components to the Colorado Water Plan. And just based on some of the comments regarding funding for the water plan, about whether, um, it's funding diversions and dams and reservoirs, which is a fair criticism. But I do just want to note that our plan is very clear on the fact that, um, we don't support new diversions out of the Colorado River Basin to other basins, um, for them to achieve their water goals. And so, you know, we had supported these measures when they were legislation. So I guess it makes sense if we want to actively support them now on the ballot. But with regards to that point of critique, I do think it's important to say, in our basin for the Colorado River, we would not support, um, other projects in the water plan that rely on diverting water out of our basin.
But, so that would be supporting DD, which is the funding mechanism. So we would need to draft, who do we tell this to?
In, in this case, you'd probably, um.
You've been here longer, you tell me.
So for.
To the DD supporters.
Or for ballot issues, it probably makes the most sense to adopt it in the form of a resolution and then see press coverage.
Well, I'm, I think we need to support CC. Um, which says that the state, I mean, it, everyone, right, gets to keep, it debruses funding issues. Rather than returning those sometimes very minimal amounts back to the taxpayers. And funding issues that can, I mean, funding that can go to issues of importance to each individual jurisdiction.
And maybe we want to have more discussion about this in a, you know, in a future open discussion where we can have our prepared.
Yeah, 'cause it's all right here in this blue book.
Yeah, I'm concerned about the, uh, endorsing, supporting the sports betting. Even though we may have a caveat in there, we're not gonna have any real influence in terms of that caveat. So we are either supporting it and.
Clear out.
Take your best chance or not. So I, I'd be concerned about supporting it. And I haven't read, read it, so, but if there's a little going to transportation, I would, I'm, I'm a little leering in that because that would then, uh, perhaps, um, pose the argument that we don't need any future transportation funding for the state, so there's.
Sure. Well, CC is just for state government funding, retaining monies. Doesn't mean that, it doesn't blanket the debrusing. It's just for state.
No, I think we're talking about two different.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I'm just reading this, and then CC, I'm sorry, I was just reading out loud.
So CC, the money is mainly earmarked for education and transportation.
Oh, there's a little bit earmarked for something else. I don't recall.
It says, public schools, higher education, and transportation, rather than refunding the tax.
And on the DD, I would want to know, who is administering the dispersing of the twenty-six million every year? Is it the CWCB, or who, who's, who's handling the money? They might be giving money to the frying pan Arkansas project to build the Northside Collection System on the frying pan and diverting more water from the frying pan, perhaps. I don't know.
Did everybody get, you would be getting these? I just picked mine up this morning in my mailbox.
Haven't looked at it yet.
Haven't yet.
I think we should bring it back next, open discussion, and have us educate ourselves a little bit by reading the blue book.
So I want to give a quick rundown on three of the items that are, uh, CCI legislative bills that really affect us. First of all is one that is actually carried by Laramo County, but it's sort of a Picken County one, too, uh, about the removal of fee caps on septic systems inspections. And it seems like the bill is going towards having a two thousand dollar cap on inspection fees. Kurt's, Kurt Dahl says we currently are averaging twenty-four hundred dollars per inspection in Picken County. Some of the other counties are spending something like four to six hundred dollars average on their inspections. And the one that caught my attention was Tim Corrigan from Route County, said that this doesn't help them at all because they're only spending about six hundred dollars on an inspection, and their system is working very well. I think that they have the, the private engineers are the ones doing the inspections and not a, not a county staff person going and doing the septic inspections. So I think that's how they are reducing their costs. And I thought it would be worth us looking into Route County system and just see what they're doing. And maybe we'd wanna take a second look at how our system is working, since it's one of the more costly ones in the state. Kurt Dahl would like to have no, no cap on the inspection fee. Uh, it looks like it'll probably be two thousand dollars, but CCI is talking about trying to get it to three thousand dollar cap for the maximum on the, on inspection fee. Then the two, Picken County brought, uh, forward two different proposed bills. One is to repeal the real estate transfer tax prohibition in Tabor by way of a twenty-twenty ballot measure. Jenny Pignano thinks that this is gonna be very difficult to accomplish. First of all, it requires a two-thirds vote in both houses, uh, in the legislature, to get it on the twenty-twenty ballot. Then the twenty-twenty ballot's gonna be very crowded, and there probably will be other Tabor issues on the same ballot. She thinks that the state legislature therefore probably wouldn't want to carry this and to get something else on the twenty-twenty ballot.
I think we still need to start the ball rolling now.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, I think we want to keep fighting the fight. Maybe we don't get it on the twenty-twenty ballot, but, uh, it's, it's a matter of educating, uh, everybody across the state. And I see that this could, you know, it's a way to raise money for affordable housing things. And there's other efforts in the state level also for getting more money for affordable housing. And maybe somehow we could tie this to that at some point in time.
Well, you can also fund childcare and senior services, and you could fund whatever your community needs. It's just, if you're talking about, about question CC being, say, of your taxpayer bill of rights, this is the one item in Tabor that took away your right to vote. So if you need help with that at the state level.
Yeah, now, I, I pointed that out to everybody, that this was, this bill takes away taxpayers' rights. In the Tabor amendment, it was taking away taxpayers' rights. And the fact that this would be a permissive thing, counties don't have to pursue it. And they have to put it to a vote of their electorate before it passes. So, um, that's the kind of thing CCI would easily support. So anyhow, we'll keep pushing for that. Chances aren't real good that it's going to go forward. The, our other bill is, uh, authorizing counties to require business licenses. And I felt like there was quite a bit of support from this amongst the, the different counties. Thomas Davidson from Summit County pointed out that we used to have the ability to, um, do, do the business licenses. And, um, it was taken away from us. So it would be getting something back that we used to have anyhow, and that makes it an easier thing to accomplish.
But it wouldn't require them to, would give them the ability to, right? You wouldn't be required to license them.
Yeah, it's a permissive, totally a permissive thing, yeah. So, and anything that is a permissive thing, uh, has an easier time getting support at CCI for sure. 'Cause a lot of counties don't want to touch it. They, you know, they're more conservative counties. They don't want any.
And they don't have to.
Less government regulation of everything. Looking at the whole score sheet, there were, we went into the meeting the other day with twenty-five different proposed legislation. Uh, CCI wants to have maybe eight or ten that they actually support. So that meant like fifteen to seventeen need to be eliminated. Three of them were removed right at the meeting, but the counties just pulled them already. And one of those was, Yaray County pulled their RS two four seven seven claim against the United States Forest Service bill that they were pursuing because of the danger of it, of Colorado becoming something like they have in Utah and that. Um, and there's about five or six other bills that the counties wanted to keep on until the October meeting, but there's only as a me, means of informing the other, like educating everybody on the, the issues. And they think they're gonna be able to resolve the issue, either carry it on their own or somehow have other means of resolving it without legislation. So that takes it down to about seventeen remaining bills that have to be, that'll basically have to be cut in, sort of in half. So I think we have a good chance of at least getting one of ours as a CCI bill.
Steve, was the, um, was the human services bill regarding the rays that Weld put out moving forward? Or did they take that?
No, which, oh, the rate on the tannin money?
No, the rays, the RAEs, having to do with how children move through the, um, human services.
Um, let's see.
And the reason I ask that is 'cause I'm just looking at our CCAT legislative agenda as well, to which our two Picken bills is on right now on the proposed CCAT agenda, for the rat and the business licensing.
Okay, Weld had five different bills. They pulled two of them already. The only one, two of them, they think they're gonna have resolved or are gonna pull them next meeting. The only one they think they're carrying forward is the one regarding the tannin.
Okay, great. I think this is the one.
Yeah, and I had written CCAT opposed that.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
So that simplifies it. Weld's five things all about human services is.
And that was one that CCAT.
Going down to just one that is easy to support, yeah. So that's, uh, in a nutshell where things are, and.
Great, thanks, Steve.
In a nutshell. Um, anybody else?
I'm good.
I have one, uh, this morning, early this morning, I went on a tour of, uh, Lincoln Creek, one of the avalanche debris areas, with, with Karen Teague from Independence Pass Foundation. Let's see, who else was there? Adam McCurdy from ACES, and then Jason Sebold, who's the Colorado State University Forestry Health guy who's presented to us in the past. And, and it was up to do a, an informal survey of what's happening with the spruce beetle, which is coming. We're expecting, uh, an increase in spruce beetle, uh, of taking, taking spruce forests. And the interesting thing is that, uh, triggered by, by drought, um, and then combine that with an avalanche with a lot of down timber, it's, it's optimal spruce beetle, uh, infestation, you know, potential when that happens. When you have all the new down timber and all these avalanche shoots. And indeed, we walked up and scraped some trees, and he showed us that spruce beetles actually love downed trees, unlike a pine beetle which lives on a living tree. The spruce beetles go after the, the sap that's left in a, in a dying or dead tree. And, uh, so we discovered, yes, they're here, uh, they have about a three or four-year lifespan. They'll start appearing probably next season. Um, and, and really what it means is our spruce forests has, as were, as anticipated, are in a certain amount of danger. And, and what should be done, what could be done, and all the questions, uh, things like establishing a seed bank, things like that. things like that are on the agenda. But really, a lot of listening sessions, a lot of public information, so we don't jump into action to do something that might not be the right thing to do. And so I think that I'd like to put a presentation by them sometime in the, in the future, maybe in November or maybe later on, toward the end of the year, to, just to talk about what we can anticipate with happening, is happening with this unique conditions, which have created this spruce beetle epidemic.
Who would that?
This is, would be Independence Pass Foundation, ACES, and the CSU Forestry Program, which is the PhD researcher is Jason Sebold, who's presented to us before. I think, I think he was with ACES or came, you know, with them before. It's, it's informative and it's fascinating and it's relevant only because there are certain things we should do and there are certainly certain things we should not do when you start hearing more about an upcoming epidemic that could take out chunks of forest. So it's an information session. I'm thinking half an hour.
Yeah, but we may want to do it after the first year because our schedule's gonna get really tight when we get into budget season.
I anticipated that. Yeah, so I was thinking the soonest would be November, but if that's too tight.
I'm thinking after the first of the year, but it's up to.
Yeah, I'd be curious if they're going after dead trees. How are they a threat to our wildlife forests?
Well, then they're going after the downed trees. But then, you know, once you get a huge infestation, then they jump, they leap out, they fly.
Yeah, we need some science on that. I'll.
This is the science. This is the guy. This is the scientist.
I'll contact the people with the Healthy Forest Collaborative that I've been involved with for years.
Great idea.
And see what.
Wait them at the same time.
Yeah, then they change it to High Mountain Forest Health or something.
Sure, you could, be welcome.
And that ACES sat on that board, so did CSU, and see what, if they're, if they're gonna, you know, reborn and see how, what they think about this. So I'll put that out as a contact.
Yeah, and my question, and I was asking Greg about this earlier, is there any possibility of the Forest Service authorizing salvage logging off of the Lincoln Creek Road, where they could do it right from the road and not have to build any new roads?
They have a hundred-foot setback. I think it's 100 feet, isn't it? Did they mention that, Greg?
They didn't talk about that, but certainly there was talk of engaging the Forest Service. So I think they're gonna reach out and.
If there's any way, any of that could be.
We'll get an ask to host them at some point for a conversation.
Might lessen the severity of the spruce beetle outbreak.
I think there was some issue with, they had to log in, because, you know, I went up there with John Ely. We went up to Grisley and looked at all that. And there was some, there was such great wood right along the roadside. And for some reason, the Forest Service said, you have to go back into the forest excrement. And we're like, let's get people to help us clear the road at the same time. So, yeah, that was an issue.
Yeah, I think a conversation with the Forest Service included on that would be.
Did they mention anything about if we have another cold winter and what it might do to the back of spruce beetles that they feel are already up there?
It turns out these beetles can weather, they, they have a four-year lifespan, three to four-year lifespan, and they have, they can produce the same glycol's that the other beetles can, and they have, they have antifreeze. So they, they expect to live through the winter.
Well, because there is, there is.
They're beneath the snowpack, they're fine.
Because there is it. Okay. All right, we'll go into the stats for the pine beetle.
Yeah, so we'll go into that later, yeah. There's a lot, there's a lot of interesting information there, but it's probably a good idea to put a presentation on a future agenda. And I'll, we'll hear from them first about when. Okay, anything else? All right, then I'd say we're adjourned. It's 3:14. Thanks, Grassroots.
Thank you, Grassroots.
Thanks, Amy.